Hear me, because I can't even see myself. All right, Heavenly Father, thank you for this opportunity that we can give you thanks and prayer today. As Board of Commissioners, prepare our hearts, not just for this Thanksgiving season, but Lord, to remember that Thanksgiving is a two-syllable word. We're giving you the glory today. We're not only to be a thankful person, but a giving person. So I bring you Hillsdale County, who is going through many, many trials, especially under the crisis of the ongoing pandemic. But Father, knowing that a sound mind that you have given us, that we would get through this with your wisdom, we would thrive, we can overcome everything through you. I know that you are honored, and when we respond to your word as local officials, I pray that you will help us respond well and bring glory and honor to your name. Lord God, I give you the glory today and honor for what you're doing in our local county right now, and for what you will do in the future for us. Thank you for our constituents, thank you for all that they do for us, and without them, we would be nothing. So whatever we today, that we bring you honor, in Jesus' name, amen. I pledge allegiance
Okay, thank you. We have our first call out to the public. Any public that's on, would you like to address the board at this time?
I would, if I may. This is Stephanie.
Thank you, go ahead.
I'm just wanting to go on record to opposing resolution 20-104, for reasons that I've stated in my email, and respectfully ask that you oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the board at this time? Hearing none, we will move along. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as stated.
Support, this is Ruth.
Thank you. Is there any additions or corrections to the consent agenda? Hearing none. I think we did roll call on everything before, didn't we?
Yeah, I forgot about that.
Yep, since it's virtual.
Yep.
So we'll do roll call since we're virtual, so Joe will do that at this point.
Commissioner Carolyn?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown? Commissioner Gaines?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Caswell?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Correspondence is listed, is there any discussion on correspondence? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the regular agenda.
I move that we approve the regular agenda as presented.
Nemo, this is Ruth.
Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, roll call.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaines?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Caswell?
Yes.
Commissioner Carolyn?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, moving right along, we have the standing order, and Doug Stanford is our only standing order. So Doug, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good morning to you, and to the rest of the Board of Commissioners. As you may recall, sadly, we lost dispatcher Christie Ash Jones in a traffic accident a few weeks ago, and so we need to replace that position. Also, Thomas Whitaker was doing really well here. We stole him actually from another center, and they upped the ante and offered to pay him more. So he has left to go back to that previous employer. He has agreed to work for us as an irregular part-time, whenever he's not busy at his old position, that's now his new position. He will help us here until we get back up to staff. But that's the reason I'm here today, to request permission to replace those two individuals. Be glad to answer any questions that you may have that's within the budget, because we're simply replacing what we had already budgeted for. Although the new people will start at slightly less, especially Mr. Whitaker was here for a couple of years, slightly less than the two that we're replacing.
I move that we support Doug's request to replace the two personnel.
I second that.
Any questions or comments?
My only comment, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Go ahead.
First of all, I can't even see myself, I hope you can hear me though, but I'll find my way around in just a second. But I, you know, it's very heartbreaking, you know, Christie, our very good employee of the county. She was, she joined this last year, we had the privilege of working together. This family of 911 Central Dispatch, I think, has been hurt quite a bit. My condolences again, once again, to the family. And Tom Whitaker, I knew him personally, so I am very sorry to see him go and join another firm, but I am in full support that we replace, and I know it's in our budget, to replace full-time dispatchers, and I think we should proceed along. So I very much am with what Doug brought today, forth today to the Board of Commissioners, and I think we should fill that as soon as we can.
Any further comments? Hearing none, a motion on the floor, I believe, is to support Doug's requests and allow him to pursue replacing those positions. Any further comment? Roll call.
Commissioner Gaines?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Caswell?
Yes.
Commissioner Carolyn?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Motion passes, you are green to go there, Doug.
Very good, sir, thank you very much to all of you, we appreciate your ongoing support.
Thank you, Chair. All right, continuing right along, committee reports, public safety. Commissioner Carolyn, you're up.
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Chair. So we've been very busy, I always like to start, District Five has been busy, busy with the committees, and so have the committees, been constantly working. And let me just begin with the Sheriff Department. As you see in the packet, we have the Sheriff's report, as you see, for October, our jail activity. And just kind of giving a little FYI, that we had about total meals served, 8,878. We had emergency calls, which were 460, non-emergency calls, 415. We totaled that to 875. Like I said, the Sheriff's Office has been busy lately. As you may have already heard, the last report that I had sent, that we had two inmates who came into the jail that were positive. They tested for COVID-19, and therefore, everybody else within the premise, which included all the officers on side, they had to go for testing. But the latest information that we've had is one corrections officer is quarantined at home, and 15 inmates at the jail are being isolated after testing positive. And so because of all of that, we had to go through lockdown about a few days back, that I had sent an info to everybody, all the Board of Commissioners and the County Clerk's office. So inmate number starting out at two, and now it has risen to 50 today as we talk. So if you do see, we do have a significant amount of increase in the positive cases just right there within the jail. Moving forward, the medical examiner investigator, we will be meeting the first week of December, and we are seeing significant increase as it relates with two things. We've had an uptick, and I continue to remind everybody that we are looking at the drug deaths or substance abuse increase and uptick in there, suicides as well. And so we're dealing with those. Altogether, we had been given a statistics for the entire 2020 year. We had about 87 cases of deaths. And then out of that, in the entire year of the 2020, if I may, we've had 32 autopsies. So just kind of a little bit of a background there with what we've provided with the invoices in the last couple of, couple of days, few weeks. Moving forward, we've got another info as it relates with the 911 Central Dispatch. They gave us their info, so I am happy to conclude that we, as we spread the word within our townships, that we're constantly in need of dispatchers, there's no doubt about it. We have a very hard turnaround as it relates with, you know, getting good folks and then staying with us. But again, that continues to go on, and hoping we can fill those two positions as well. In regards with MERS, we'll be talking about that shortly. That particular issue today that's been brought up, and we just want to thank Jason Stiverson for all the work, and the rest of the staff, the union, and the Sheriff's Office, including Sheriff Scott Hotchire and under Sheriff. So we're very pleased with them in regards with that. In regards with the Planning Commission, the County Planning Commission, I have already enlightened to you, Board of Commissioners, that what we started, I would like to see us finish. The Planning Commission at the moment for the county has been working really hard to place the master plan together. We're doing it, as you know, with very minimum budget. But I do ask of you to consider the budget that has been proposed today. I would like to propose that the budget be the same, that was proposed last year, that no changes take place in that, we're not asking for anything more. But if you would prefer a board work for you to make sure that we supersede or we oversee all the townships and the work within the ordinances or the master plan to be put in place, we would appreciate that that budget be restored and not remove anything, we're not asking for anything more. But I do ask for the per diem, as I requested earlier. I have made some issues, I've brought that with Mark, our Chair. Also, same thing with Vice Chair Julie Gaines, that you do consider us to move forward with what we have in place. And in regards with the master plan, we are continuing to work together. Our board members look forward to finishing it at least by early spring next. And in that regards, if you have any questions, we'd be very happy to entertain those. Moving forward, I don't have anything other than what I brought to you today. If there's any question, I would, I would be happy to entertain that with the Board of Commissioners today, Mr. Chair.
Any questions for Namada? Hearing none, we'll move to Julie.
Thank you. Is Randy available, Mark?
He is.
Okay, we're going to have discussion about the HVAC bids, and I'm just going to very graciously turn that over to Randy, our expert.
Okay, what I'm gonna do, Randy, why don't you take my seat, and I'll just move so you, so we don't have to move all these wires. Do you have cooties?
Yes, yes, I do. Okay, we had a bid opening for the HVAC project on Friday. We, it was a little disappointing as far as the number of bids that we got. We had, I think, five or six actual contractors go through the building for the pre-bid process, and that, some of them fell out because of, they were counting on a local subcontractor here for repair work and what have you done after the installation. And that contractor decided no, and he bailed out. And when he bailed out, that took away a couple, two, three contractors' ability to bid. So we lost some bids because of that. We did get two bids. One bid is from Griffiths Mechanical, and the other one is from Adrian Mechanical Services. Adrian Mechanical Services, their basic bid was $188,000 for the HVAC system. The base bid for Griffiths Mechanical was $632,000. Now, I say base bids because both of these contracts have, or these bids have allowances in them for additional work to be done. And so if you add that in to the Griffiths Mechanical, their base bid was 632, they had additional $30,000, which brings it up to 662. And if you take your 10% for the possibility of change orders and that sort of thing, you're actually up around $728,000. So that would be probably the lowest bid, and the lowest money would be that right there.
Does anybody have any questions for Randy concerning the bids?
I do, this is Ruth. Hi, Randy.
Hi.
What's the warranty on this? How long is the work?
Most, all these companies, their, their basic warranty on equipment is 10 years. Some of it's not quite that long, some of it's five years. What it really doesn't matter that much, because when you do the warranty repair, it's about the same as if we did it ourselves. The only reason I go ahead and I have the contractors do it is it gives us a track record in the event that we have something major happen. Then, then I've got a track record of the different problems through the mechanical contractors that service the equipment. So we do the minor service on them, they do the major, and then usually the major, you're looking at five, and some of them are 10 years, so warranties.
Okay, so they're gonna do the major work on it?
Yes, we are not doing anything on it.
Okay, okay, and what's the timeline? How long is?
The timeline, they know that we've got about a four-week window in the spring. And they have to be done, I believe, first part of June, June 18th is the completion date. So it'll take place about a month before that, you'll see them starting in. And so they're to have it completed by June 18th, 2021.
Okay, thank you, Randy.
Now, this system came out a little bit different than what was originally explained to you. We are keeping our boilers in place for this system. Instead of relying completely on the VRF system, the boiler system would also be a backup system. And what I mean by that is wherever they take out a console, now they'll put in a fin tube heater. And of course, that'll have controls and everything on. What that is for is if we get into super cold weather, like zero or below zero, those fin tube heaters will take up the slack that the VRF systems can't handle. By doing this, they were able to cut the size of the equipment by one-third. My question is, okay, if we add fin tube heaters on there, the cost of brass and the cost of control system, how's that save us money? Well, by doing that, they can cut the size of the equipment down one-third, which actually saves the money, actually saves more money. So it makes sense to go ahead and utilize what we already have, and then we're able to have one-third less capacity and still be able to heat and cool this facility.
Does anyone else have questions?
It's the same, it's the same system that's in the Cobb building, other than what you just said with the backup of the boilers?
Correct, it's the same in the Cobb, same as in the youth home. It's a VRF system, both those are VRF systems, and this would be also.
Thank you.
A modified, let's say a modified VRF because of the boilers.
Are there any other questions for Randy? Randy, are you looking for an approval for the bids, or?
Yes, you know, I told the contractors, you folks have probably decided today and will be able to let them know if we're granting a bid to them or not, so.
Okay. I would go ahead and make a motion then to accept the bid from Griffiths Mechanical?
I support that.
Is there any further discussion? Questions or comments?
Just a quick one, Mr. Chair. Sorry about that, slower. Thank Randy for being on top of this all, I really appreciate it. I know with this timeline, with all this, you know, current three-week kind of shutdown, I feel that a lot of things have slowed down. Randy for being on top of that and getting us this on a timely framework, so I appreciate that. Thank you, Randy.
He said thank you. Yeah, okay, any other questions or comments? All right, we have a motion on the floor, we'll roll call, please.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Caswell?
Yes.
Commissioner Carolyn?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaines?
Yes.
Motion passes, I guess I would ask now that Bruce, are you prepared to get with Stephanie and move forward on getting the bond or getting, or however we were gonna finance this?
I can do that if you want me to, Mr. Chair.
I would like so.
Okay.
I know she had discussed some other options other than bond, but I'll let you work with her on that and report back on that, so.
Come on over for Thanksgiving dinner, Stephanie, and we'll talk it over, over the turkey.
Does that mean you're gonna talk turkey?
Sounds good to me.
All right, thank you. Please continue, Julie.
So in the interest of time, I'm gonna save my committee reports till the next meeting, except for I would like to mention one thing. While I was out of town and on an airplane and not able to attend the last Commissioners' meeting, I was, while I was out of town, able to virtually attend the EDP meeting. And Greg Moore from Consumers Energy is also on the EDP Board, and he mentioned a program for veterans specifically. It's an apprenticeship to become an electrical linesman, which is a high-skilled, high-paying job. If people would like more information, it is just for veterans. They can contact Sue Ornette at the EDP Office to get that information and put in an application for that program, and I just wanted to mention that. But that concludes my report for today.
Julie, have you conveyed that information to Renee or?
No, I'm gonna share it with her, I plan on doing that, yes.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along. Is there any questions for Julie?
Julie, this is Nemo, just a quick question.
Go ahead.
In regards with the, so Sue from EP?
Yes, you can kind of.
You know, like, right, right, so, so. Share this news in regards with the opening of the township, or do I still get to hear from Susan?
You know, I can see, you can share it, I can see, Nemo, if she can send us like, an email with information or something, so that we can have the contact information. I, I actually, I do have it, I can probably send it out. So I'll, I'll get you some information about it, so that you can talk about it in your district at your meetings.
Thank you, because I'd like to spread that in December, so thank you.
Yes, okay.
Mark, this is Ruth.
Go ahead.
Is it okay if, before Bruce launches into his budget, which I think is gonna take a fair amount of time, can I do my report real quick? My report is about a two-minute report, I don't, I'm keeping it extremely short. Can I get it out of the way before Bruce starts, is that all right?
I see no problem with that unless someone has an objection. Hearing none, go ahead, Ruth.
Thanks. All I've got is mainly the Michigan State Extension Advisory Council had their meeting, and there's about, I'm looking at the notes right now, there's about five pages of notes of what happened during the meeting, and I forwarded that to you all on the email, so to save time today, so I'm not gonna talk about it. I just, that's one thing. The other thing is, I spent a fair amount of time with Bruce and Derek working on the budget, and we got that done, and I'll let Bruce talk more about that, so I'm not gonna say anything more about that right now. Also, I did the Human Services Network meeting, not a lot there. They have a new chair, that's Terry Veer. They talked about their budget, they talked about some housekeeping stuff. They have one meeting left in the year, which is in December, and that's it. So that's about all for that. And then all the other stuff I've been working on has been Lifeways, quite busy at Lifeways with a lot of meetings, I was up there yesterday, and also working on suicide prevention. We had our Suicide Law, Suicide Survivors Day was last Saturday, the 21st, and we had some activities around that. So I've been pretty busy, quite a bit going on lately, a lot of meetings and stuff. Unless there's any questions, that's my report.
Any questions for Ruth?
Ruth, this is Nemo, I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to thank you for that report on the Lifeways. I was wondering and would like to know for District Five's sake, are we still doing the Crisis Unit? That would be that mobile Crisis Unit that we had a great presentation one time, Mary Beth, and how is it progressing now? And are we looking at more frequent runs as it relates with the mobile Crisis Unit lately?
The mobile Crisis Unit is operational. It's coming, it comes to Hillsdale when there's a need and when there's a call for it. And it's, it's working good, it's, it's working for Hillsdale. Bruce, you can add, Bruce, do you have anything to add about the mobile Crisis Unit?
No.
Thank you, Ruth.
That's, that's what we call, if we have somebody that's in crisis, let's say if they're suicidal, we want them to go to Jackson, we would call the mobile Crisis Unit. That's, that would be our first call, that's what we do.
Thank you, Ruth, for that info, thank you.
You're welcome.
I would remind everyone that Mary Beth will be here, well, she'll be virtual, but we'll have an opportunity to hear her report and ask her questions directly on December 8. I would remind everyone that Mary Beth will be here, well, she'll be virtual, but we'll have an opportunity to hear her report and ask her questions directly on December 8th. Also, I might add, I have had a conversation with her and Karen recently as to the additional space that they have leased from the county out on Care Drive. So there may be some opportunity. They're still working out some of the plans, which as soon as they get that worked out as to what exactly will be available with that additional space. That may, I mean, that'll be available to us, but that may be something else that they can provide some of that type of service. So that's to be determined yet, but just FYI, I guess.
Mr. Chair?
Yep, go ahead.
So in regards with the. Are they operating, are they present physically there or they're doing other ways as in virtual? But is the Care Drive facility open now to the public or not?
Yes.
Bruce or Ruth, do you know? Okay, because I, I couldn't recall if they had gone back to appointment only or how they were operating.
I think they're open.
Okay, thank you.
So they are, they are okay with the walk-ins?
Well, I know that, that, just like we do, they've got a screener at the door.
Okay, thank you for that information.
I would like to take a moment, if we could, before we get into the budget discussion, under my report, HSA funding. And since that is part of the budget, I think we better take that item. I know I've talked to Derek, and he indicated that in the budget is the same funding level for the deductible portion of the HSA. And so as last year, we funded 50% the first of January, and I believe the other half, the first of June or July. Derek, did I speak correctly on that? Derek, are you with us?
I don't think he has a microphone.
Okay. Well, in any event, I know the money's in the budget, but we had not discussed this, but we are in open enrollment right now. So my recommendation to the board would be to do the same as we did last year as far as the funding of that deductible portion on the HSA. There you are. Go ahead, Derek.
Yeah, I just, I apparently have my phone muted. Just wanted to confirm, yeah, everything you said was correct. First of, first of January and first of July is, is the time period that we use this year.
Okay, and we had done, I know you sent out the resolutions from that last year. Should we follow up this discussion with resolutions to put it on record for 2021?
Yeah, I think once the budget is discussed, then, and we, you know, we confirm that that's the route we're going. I can follow up with resolutions, you know, for, there's kind of three different aspects of the HSA with the funding being the most important. But I'll, I can follow up those resolutions at the next meeting.
Okay, I know you had some language changes you wanted to make to one of them, so, yeah. Let's plan on that for the next meeting unless someone has a burning desire to change what we've done on that HSA.
Mr. Chairman, do you want a motion to have the HSA funding remain the same as for 2020?
I think that would be appropriate, don't you, Derek? And then we can follow it up with the resolution?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay, yes, Julie. Basically, we need a motion to, you know, basically follow the same format that we did last year as far as the HSA funding of the deductible.
Okay, I would make that motion to allow the HSA funding to remain the same as it was in 2020.
I second that.
Hey, I think it's fairly self-explanatory, but is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioner Caswell?
Yes.
Commissioner Carolyn?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaines?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes. Thank you. It passes. All right, now we'll get to the meat of the meeting. Bruce, you're up.
Okay, Resolution 2104 to the Honorable Board of Commissioners. I'm not going to read the whole kit and caboodle, but in the middle it says that this resolution has a $3,500 stipend for Executive Secretary to the Board of Commissioners, a $1,500 stipend for processing FOIA's, and a $500 stipend for handling the credit cards. Therefore, the amount of $15,000 will be transferred from the Concealed Pistol License Fund 263.00-000-932.000 to the General Fund at the end of each year commencing in 2021. The amount of $10,000 will remain in the General Fund, which will be reviewed on a yearly basis and subject to change. Furthermore, we, the Honorable Board of Commissioners, do hereby set an annual stipend of $5,000 to be paid to Marnie Cass, County Clerk, for the above additional duties listed from the remainder of the $15,000. The stipend will be paid at the end of the year commencing in 2021, in addition to her regular wages, County Clerk. Stipend will be reviewed and may be renewed annually at the discretion of the Board of Commissioners Chair, pending the County Clerk is still willing to conduct the additional duties. That's the resolution, Mr. Chairman, that, that you wanted. Now, a couple of things on this resolution.
We have to have a support before he can discuss it, right, right, Mark?
Correct, Ruth.
I'll support it. So we can discuss it. Go ahead, Ruth.
Things have come up legitimate questions. First of all is what the CPL money can be used for. And the CPL money can only be used for administering the CPL fund. It's a plan in state law that was set by Lansing. Back in 2019, a study done by the County Clerk with Derek. And what it amounted to was that there was about $7,000 spent each year administering the CPL fund in the County Clerk's office. It was like a time study. Now, the $7,000 includes wages, it includes fringes and health insurance. So this is, these are the hours that the ladies in the office spend administering this particular program. And it is perfectly legitimate to transfer $7,000 each year from the CPL fund to the General Fund to pay for those, to pay for those hours that are worked administering that. The County Clerk has been in charge of this fund since 2015. The state law changed, took it from the Sheriff's Department, moved it in the County Clerk's office. There has been one year in those six years, counting this year as well, there's been one year where the County Clerk has agreed to transfer the money, the $7,000 from the CPL fund to the General Fund. So there's five years where that has not happened. That five years would amount to about $35,000, okay? That, it all depends on how you look at it, but I'm just going to say that, that the CPL fund is in arrears to the General Fund. The General Fund paid for things and was not reimbursed because there was no agreement to transfer the money. So that $35,000 is kind of setting out there, if you will, as a pot that legally could be transferred. Nothing beyond that, because year by year, it's only $7,000. Now, the other piece of this puzzle is when the negotiations started on the budget with all the various departments and so on and so forth, everybody came in and sat down. And the original, the original offer, if you will, was to reimburse Marnie $2,000 for her extra duties that she's taken on. I might add, because the Board of Commissioners has asked her to take them on over the years. And she countered at that time with $3,000, and it was left at that point. Then the chairman went in and talked to her and came up with what you see in front of you here. Which is fine. The amount of money, the $2,000 that was being offered was similar to what Derek gets for taking care of health insurance issues. He gets a stipend for that. And if you remember before Derek did that, I think it was Tamra that, that took care of that. And then when she changed positions, she didn't want to do it anymore. It took too much time. So the idea of a stipend has been around for a while. How much you want to give is open to question, and whether or not you want to allow money, additional money above the $7,000 to be transferred is, is open to question. But remember, any transfer that takes place has to be agreed to by the County Clerk. And if the County Clerk does not want to transfer the money, then it will not get transferred. As I said, we, we established that there's about $7,000 of costs every year that could have been transferred over the last six years, but only one of those years has that happened. So my whole point in all this was to say to her, I don't want this to fall back on the General Fund down the road. Well, if you take, if you assume, and that's up to all of us to decide, if you assume that we can take $8,000 each year out, because seven is absolutely legal if Marnie agrees to it. The additional eight is on top of that. And if you look at this $35,000 that has never been transferred over the last, five out of the last six years didn't get transferred, you could take $8,000 out of that each year, and that would get you four years' worth of coverage, if you're comfortable doing that. I don't know where the $15,000 came from. What I can tell you is that if the $7,000 is paying for the legitimate expenses of the people in the office, and, and we want to get the other $5,000 to cover the costs of the stipends for Marnie, then that $5,000 divided into and that hasn't been transferred would get us seven years before it would revert back to the General Fund. So that's what I can tell you about this. The only thing I would say on this resolution that, that I'm concerned about is at the very end of it, it talks about this stipend will be reviewed and may be renewed annually at the discretion of the Board of Commissioners Chair. I would simply put a period after at the discretion of the Board of Commissioners. I think the Commissioners should decide this each year, all of them together. I would, and then strike out everything else that's after that, and I would add in a sentence that says whoever they do the three duties will receive the stipend. And I think that needs to be made clear, that that stipend, that the money goes with the stipend. So if, for instance, the County Clerk decides, or the Commissioners decide, that, let's say, handling the credit cards, we decide we want to give that duty to the Finance Chair, which I think would make sense, then $500 would go to the Finance Chair, not, not to the County Clerk. So then the money would move as the position moves. And if somebody else decides to do the FOIA, the money would move with that as well. So that's what I can tell you.
I have a question. Bruce, this is Ruth.
Yes.
Or, or for Derek. How does this affect our audit? I'm thinking about Stephanie's letter that she sent to us. And she quoted Ken Tausma in there and talked, how does this affect our audit? How is this going on?
Stephanie, Stephanie's letter, Stephanie is exactly correct in what she put in her letter. And you can't take money out of the CPL fund and just spend it for anything. Now, the point I'm trying to make here to get across to you is if you feel that it would have been legitimate, and it is legitimate to request $7,000 to be taken out of the CPL fund every year to cover the costs of the girls in office, that is legitimate. That is completely defensible. It's no problem. Five out of the last six years, that money's never been transferred. It couldn't come through the tree. Because we couldn't. Hang on. Hang on. Five out of the last seven year, five out of the last six years, that money has never been transferred.
Right.
So if we choose as Commissioners to look at that and say, well, that's $35,000 that could have been transferred legally, and it could be transferred now at a later date, okay? If you choose to look at it that way, then that money could be transferred. If you choose not to look at it that way, then that money can't be transferred. Plain and simple.
But I'm asking, that, what, you're very respectfully speaking, Bruce.
Absolutely no, I have absolutely no doubt whatsoever in my mind, Ruth, that if we choose to look at the $35,000 that has not been transferred as transferable money, that that we can justify to any auditor and the state of Michigan that it's legal to do. Now, we can't go beyond that $35,000. And if we start taking the $7,000 out every year from this point forward, then once that $35,000 runs out, then there's no more.
Is Derek on the call?
Derek is, yeah.
Okay, Derek, what, do you have an opinion about this with Ken Tausma and the auditor? What's your opinion about this? I just don't want it to get burned in the audit.
I think that you have, like Commissioner Caswell said, you have that, that amount of money that you can justify transferring to the General Fund and nothing more than that. But the decision to transfer is, is the Board's decision.
Okay. So we're clear, according to what Bruce has told us and according to what Derek's told us, we're clear with the auditor. Okay, thank you.
With that amount of money, nothing to bother us.
Thank you, Bruce. It was a good explanation. Thanks a lot. We talked about this a lot when we were, when we were doing the budget. The other question I have for you, Mr. Caswell, is.
Please, Bruce.
Bruce, I want to call you, I want to call you Senator, but I'm not going.
My dad's dead, so go ahead.
I wanted to call, I want to call you Senator. When, where do the other stipends come from? I think I know the answer to this question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Like you were talking about Tamra's stipend and some of the others Derek gets a stipend. Where do those other, where do those other stipends come from?
Well, the stipend for Derek comes out of the General Fund. Is that what you mean? What pot of money does it come out? Yeah, it comes out of the General Fund.
Okay, okay. I guess I feel like we talked about this a lot when we were doing the budget process, and we went over and over and over this. And for one thing, when you, when you look at this resolution, it says a $1,500 stipend for processing the FOIA's. The FOIA's have increased by a lot, lot, lot over the last few years. Marnie has been inundated with FOIA's by a huge amount. We went into her office and she showed them to us. And she's spending a lot more time on FOIA's than she ever did before. Well, that's one issue. The other issue is the $3,500 stipend for Executive Secretary to the Board of Commissioners. We talked about this a lot. The Board of Commissioners used to have their own secretary, Deb Coughing, at one time. And over the years, we've talked about hiring a secretary for the Board. That's been a topic, hiring another secretary for the Board, which you could do. But hiring a secretary for the Board, even if you hired a part-time one, would be about $25,000 a year or more than that. A full-time one is 45 or more than that, plus their benefits and stuff. Marnie, we pay Marnie a stipend of 3,500. It's a lot less, and she's doing a lot of work. We all know for a fact on the Commissioners, she's contacted all of us in the mornings, at night, on weekends, at all different times when she isn't even supposed to be working. So, so these are the reasons why we're looking at this. What we're trying to do is compensate employees for their work and for their responsibility. and for their responsibilities and what they're doing. That's what our attempt is. Thank you.
As I said before, I'm going to make an amendment at the end of this thing to say that maybe renewed annually at the discretion of the Board of Commissioners, period. Strike out everything else that there and then put in a sentence, uh whoever the Commissioners assigned to do any of the three duties will receive the stipend to make it clear that the money goes with the job. This is not something that's being given just to the county clerk. The money goes with the job.
Yeah, I support the amendment.
Well.
Chair.
Go ahead, Namu.
Sir, you can go ahead before me.
Well, I was just going to say to Bruce that, you know, if you're going to propose an amendment, I I personally think we need to rewrite this resolution. It needs to come back in a different format. Uh because these stipends can't, they can't be tied to the CPL fund. Um. If I understand and I've reached out, Stephanie and I have talked, I've reached out to Mac on this. Um, those stipends can't be tied to that CPL fund. So it's got to be written differently because the way the resolution reads, it has the appearance that the stipends are tied to the CPL fund.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I am more than happy to take that suggestion. I'll drop this baby right now.
I I if
I withdraw my question to accept it.
I withdraw it also.
And uh Ruth, you and Bruce can work on, I rewrite if you would please. But it needs to come back in at least two different resolutions. So that we have separation on this issue. So.
I'm more than happy to write it up.
Thank you, sir.
You just made my day, Mr. Chairman. God bless you.
All right, thank you.
The next, the next resolution is the next resolution one oh five to the Honorable Board of Commissioners, we recommend tentative approval of the attached twenty twenty one general fund budget for the County of Hillsdale. I move for the adoption of this amendment for this resolution.
This is Ruth.
Okay, now you were sent you were sent the uh concise, this is the budget you're going to end up approving eventually. Uh whatever happens with it, okay? You were also sent the detailed budget and then you were also, I believe, sent the special revenue funds and all those pots and everything else. That'll come up in the next resolution. But this is, this is the big budget. Now, the the only thing I want to mention to you as you look at this budget uh and you can see the totals at the end. But be careful when you're comparing the twenty twenty one proposed budget. Don't compare it to the twenty twenty projected activity. Uh I spoke to you in the past about the fact that this year, because of all the stuff that happened with the COVID and next year, we kind of got a, these two budgets are going to kind of blend together. We got to look at them as a total. So go back to the proposed, the two thousand uh nineteen act and give you a little bit better idea because you'll see on some of these things where the twenty twenty one budget is quite a bit, quite a bit higher than the projected activity for this year. And that's in not totally, but for a lot of, a lot of the that is because of so so much downtime this year. Now, just a couple of things I want to point out to you is if you look on the yes, if you look on the first page down at the Sheriff's Department, you will see that there is a significant increase from the the year from what it was back in nineteen. Now, it's down from what they submitted to us. You see, they submitted us about two million sixteen thousand. And it came in at one million nine forty-three. Derek did a really nice job of going through every deputy and every corrections officer, and he looked at everything they got, what their wages were and everything else to get an accurate representation in this line item. And that study he did resulted in the drop that you see uh in the Sheriff's Department. Things had been just ongoing probably for quite a few years and never been really looked at in detail. Derek did a very good job, took a lot of time to look at that in detail. Now, you'll see in the county jail down below that the, he did the same thing with them and the amount went up. So from what they proposed. So there were some pluses and there were some minuses there. If you look at the total appropriations, uh which is clear to the back, you'll see that there's about yes, twelve million nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars of expenditures. And you'll see that the revenue there is twelve million nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars. So there's there's about a thousand dollar surplus. Now, the revenues that we have in place, uh we are assuming, and that's a dangerous word, but we're assuming that the wind farm will be finished. And we are not assuming that anything will be done with the uh solar farms that are being built. Now, there's one solar farm that will be done, Marty Taylor tells me, by the end of the year, but it's fairly small. And as best I can figure, if that's put on the tax roll for next year, that'll bring us about six thousand. So it's not a huge amount of money. Uh but at least it's something to the positive. Um, the other thing we did on the Planning Commission, uh I had listened to Namu talk about the fact that we didn't need a secretary at all. And so originally, we were getting rid of the secretary completely. Then I got a phone call from Mark and he said I ought to talk to Nick Wheeler, which I did. And Nick talked about everything that was needed in the Planning Commission and so on. And so as is typical in America, we hit a compromise. And what we're, what we've got in the budget is money to keep this person, right now, we've got a person there one full day every week. And what the budget has in it is money for one person for four hours each week. Nick indicated that, you know, I talked about him, well, what if we'd have a person, one, a person once every two weeks? And he said, well, there really needs to be somebody there to answer the phone uh on a regular basis. So people know what the hours are and they can call on a regular basis and be there. And he said, that's really what you're after. So this was a compromise that we settled on. And that's what you see in the budget. There's money for that. So this person who's currently working eight hours every day, uh eight hours one day a week, excuse me, would the, would under this budget be working four hours every week?
All right, I'd like to say something. I'm so sorry, Mr. Chair, if I may be allowed.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Bruce, with all due respect, there has been a little miscommunication. Now, the eight hour that we get out of Kim, there was never a proposal to remove uh that position completely. The budget that was passed with the resolution last year was uh in December of two thousand nineteen, a resolution that was brought forth, I believe it was signed by Ruth and tentatively to keep seven thousand plus dollars, I'm not sure of the exact amount, to keep the position that Kim is right now in. So that gave us eight hours, which was once a week on Fridays. Now, there was no communication whatsoever to completely dissolve that position, although there is a possibility and room for that secretary work to be done um within the board. But this is how it was set up with the resolution. I'm okay. I can live with it. But there, the communication that was had in two thousand nineteen was to keep the nine thousand six hundred and fifty dollars within the Planning Commission to oversee all of the master plans and ordinances and everything that the townships do and maintain a master plan for our county. And yes, a lot of things are done differently on our nearby county. Talked to Eric Loythrus's office and found out from the Director of the Legislative that, no, you don't necessarily have to have. But we can make a difference in Planning Commission and keep it, which is why my entire whole argument all along was that not remove any monies for what was projected. Rather, I want to be able to see Brad Benzinger continue as a chair for the County Planning Commission. We'd like to have our board members who give us valuable time come at one o'clock out of their difficult um timeframes of work. We have uh credentialed folks who come and who are, who've joined the board, representing education, representing agriculture, representing uh townships. We have a conservative um uh farm of township. We're not asking uh for this board to uh supersede with what we have, but rather to keep that. And if you will cut the budget, I'm going to have a problem uh requesting for per diem for the board. Like I said, people come and this, I don't want it to see it like a volunteer position. I don't want to diminish or dissolve the whole Planning Commission. So with all that due respect, what was proposed as a resolution in December of two thousand nineteen, it'll be a moot point today if this budget that we see will be cut, which I see to four thousand. You're giving half the budget for us to even, well, we started, like I said, I'd like to finish. I'd like to have a master plan put in place. We're not asking for anything more here, but if Kim was put in uh with, in in lieu of a resolution to proceed with all the works that she's been doing for once a week, we, I think we have a good relationship with Ms. Extension right now. And if we can keep it the way it is, I think this county would be uh really glad that by sticking with our budget.
Bruce, on the Planning Commission budget, um the requested budget amount was ninety-six fifty, the proposed budget is forty-four fifty. Who submitted the ninety-six fifty?
Derek.
Okay, I, that's just a question I had wrote down here, so.
I'm asking Derek.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Uh, yeah, this is Derek. Um, I want to say I sent it to Kim Jackson to give to the Planning Commission Board to fill out their budget. Um, and I, I don't think I ever got back an official request. Um, and I, and then after talking to Kim uh verbally, I think I left it pretty much the same and she wanted to update a couple of things, like mailings and things like that. But I don't think I ever got a physical request back. Um but again, it was through talking with um with Kim Jackson that the the request was entered into the budget.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I can put a little light on that.
Go ahead.
So the ninety-six fifty that you're looking at was presented, what we kind of all along had, which would include the eight-hour section of work that Kim provides us. That's not changed. And when the resolution of last year that I just talked a little bit about it, that would cover uh keeping eight hours of her help. Okay? And then couple of the monies, which is about a hundred, two hundred dollars uh within that framework is for advertisement when we do have public hearings, when all of this is completed uh to seek input from elected officials of the township and public as well. So a little bit of money is within that. So we're, that has been just the minimum. Nothing has been changed out of the ninety-six fifty. If that's the amount that you got, uh then uh it's been the same all along. Nothing has been added. But I would like to add just a little bit more for the per diem, which is not much. I'm not asking much. Per diem is a very small amount to compensate for board members to to be participating. They take time to come and devote, uh you know, their credentials towards this.
And I'll add uh the twenty twenty budget, um Commissioner Nemrata is correct, the twenty twenty budget is, was for nine thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. So the requested budget is the exact same uh for twenty twenty one as it was for twenty twenty-two.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Um, I would like the opportunity to seek Derek um at some point within this framework of this week so that we can um try to bring the exact number amount uh to 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 kind of have that corrected, if you will. Uh I would like to project the ninety-six fifty as presented or proposed. And then in addition to that, the per diem. Um, you know, these two things need to be uh together. And I'd like to propose uh that amount this, you know, the, in the coming week, having to have discussed this with Derek.
Well, I would like to note that, at least to my recollection, we have never paid a per diem as long as I've been on the board for the Planning Commission. That would be a total new piece to this.
Can I add one thing?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Uh, prior to twenty twenty, the, there was never any funds expended for the Planning Commission at all. Twenty twenty was the first year that uh spending began um with the implementation of an administrative assistant. Um, also in the twenty twenty budget was about nine hundred dollars in a special projects line item, line item. Uh and none of that money has been spent to date. And that is also in the twenty twenty-one requested as the twenty twenty-one requested. Again, it's the same as the, as the twenty twenty budget. Again, just only for information purposes is the only way, only reason I provide that.
Okay, thank you, Derek.
Mark.
And I will add one more thing. There's also a hundred and sixty dollars in there for advertising, fifty dollars in there for travel and mileage, and seventy dollars in there for seminars and education uh in their request, in their request. Um.
Correct.
And what has, and all of that has been removed except for uh a one-time-a-week, four-hours-a-week uh position as well as there's a hundred dollars for postage and a hundred and sixty dollars for advertising. So you you add those together, that's a two hundred and sixty dollars of expense is built into the budget um in addition to the four hours a week uh for the administrative assistant. So that projection has already kind of been done, I guess. Um, I I guess the debate would be if that's enough. Um, and again, that's that's a board decision. I'm just trying to provide information.
Okay, Mark.
Go ahead.
Um, this is Ruth. Um, I was on the Planning Commission for five years. I was the secretary back when we did the master plan the last time and when we um wrote the ordinance the last time. And the Planning Commission ordinance is going to sunset in July of twenty twenty-one. So there'll be a question there of whether they're going to rewrite that ordinance or not. That's up to the Planning Commission, the current Planning Commission. But that's something for us to consider when we're looking at the budget. When we're, when we're, we're going to fund all this for them. Uh, whether they're, what they're going to do when that ordinance sunsets in July next summer. And the other thing that I want to mention is that um I done an awful lot of recruiting of new Planning Commission members when I was on the Planning Commission. We were struggling with meeting a quorum. When we had our meetings, we didn't have a quorum. So we couldn't conduct business. And so I got on, trying to recruit, and I recruited quite a few of the members that were on the Planning Commission, and it was a lot of work. And the two stumbling blocks, when I started talking to people about, will you be on the Planning Commission? The two stumbling, the two questions that they always asked me was The two stumbling, the two questions that they always asked me was, what time does your planning commission meet? And how much does it pay? And I had to tell them, we don't pay nothing, and we meet at one o'clock in the afternoon. And that knocked about 90% of the people out because they didn't want to meet in the middle of the day, and they didn't want to be on something that didn't pay anything. So that's also just for informational purposes. Everybody on this commissioners, I'm sure, I know Julie has, and I know Bruce has, and probably Mark has, all been on the planning commission in the past at one time or another. So I'd like to have some other opinions, whether it be today or whether it be another day when we have the public hearing, whatever you want to do, Mark, but I'd like to hear what the other commissioners think about this as well that have been on it. Thank you.
Julie, do you have a comment?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I served on the planning commission for a year. You know, we ask pretty, you know, high-skilled professionals in their field to voluntarily be on this board. And if you take it seriously, it's a lot of work. And so, you know, I think a per diem is, you know, something that we should consider. That's another issue. Going back to the budget, I fought in 2019, actually, to add Kim Jackson, when I served on the planning commission, as the full-time person in the county. These townships, cities and villages, they have to have a constant contact person within the county. It can't be a commissioner that could change, you know, as we've seen this year, with four commissioners changing constantly. It can't be that person. It needs to be a person within the county as a constant contact so that we can run the planning commission as it should be. The master plan is extremely important, I feel, to the county. I can tell you from my experience as a real estate broker, this is a very good tool to attract business to our county. If people can see through the master plan, where do we allow, you know, marijuana operations? Where do we allow wind farms? Where do we allow solar farms? These types of new things, you know, people have to be able to see this, and we have to know where we can sell property to people that want to develop these kind of operations. The master plan is extremely important to our county. The planning commission also handles all the PA 116 requests, et cetera. If we take this away, or we only make it a part-time position, then the Board of Commissioners for a lot of the work. I don't think the Board of Commissioners is, you know, ready to take on any additional work. This committee needs to continue, and it needs to be fully funded. That's my input.
Anyone else? I think this particular item, which is 721, I guess, on the numbers, it may need to go back to the Finance Committee for further work. And I guess that would be my recommendation at this time, unless someone else has got a suggestion.
Well, Mark?
This is the budget that's being sent to you, Mark. So if they want to change, they have to do a motion.
Yeah, Mark, I think that, I don't think we should send it back to the Finance Committee because we're beyond that point. What we need to do next is have the will of the Board of Commissioners. Julie just gave her opinion. What's your opinion, Mark? We need to know what the Board wants to do.
Somebody needs to make a motion, Mark.
I think, I would have to agree with the Finance Chair that someone needs to make a motion to alter this as it stands. Do I hear any motion to change the amount?
Well, Mark, this is my question. The per diem part, we haven't considered. So what are we going to do about that? How would you address that in this motion?
You just make a motion for the whole, for what amount you want to change. You don't break it out. You just say, I make a motion that we want to, we want to revise the budget for the planning commission to be such and such. And then in your mind, you're including the per diems that way. But Bruce, am I on, am I right? Am I on track? Okay.
I would. The Finance Committee can break that out however need be. Julie, if, you know, basically what Ruth's looking at is a total amount that it needs to be changed. If it's 4450 now, what is the total amount? So, you know, really, that's the question at this point.
Mr. Chair, I could help for that, if you will.
Go ahead.
I would like to make a motion that we keep the proposed budget for County Planning Commission for 9650 with addition to, as requested.
How much do you want for the amount, Nemo, for the?
I need that amount. Yes, I need that amount from Derek. What would that be? What would that come to? I need that exact amount from Derek. Derek, would you be able to help me with that amount when it's proposed as per diem in addition to the 9650?
Well, if you tell me how many people, how much the per diem is, and how many meetings a year it is, you know, I can, I can give you that number pretty quick.
Well, I can tell you right now, I'm not going to go for anything more than 9650. If you want to, if you want to do 9650, I'll think about it. But if you're going to start piling per diems on top of that 9650, I'm not in favor of that. I'm sorry. It's going too high. We're getting, we're getting, we're getting out of range here because Bruce already talked to Nick, and Nick said that all they needed was one person, four hours a week.
No, Nick didn't say that. He needed to have somebody on a regular basis so people knew what hours were, so they could call and get questions answered. That's what Nick said.
Okay. I wrote down one person, four hours each week when you were talking. Where did that come from?
Came from me after talking with Nick, and it was compromised between having a full-time person, quite frankly, has a lot of downtime, and the person that having the office staffed on a regular basis so people could get a hold of him.
Okay, that's fine. I can go to that. One person, four hours a week. I understand that.
All right, Nemo, you started making a motion. Would you please continue?
Looking for a second.
So please repeat your motion, please.
I would like to move to make a motion to approve the county planning budget to 9650 as proposed for the year with addition to the per diem.
No, I'm not going to support that.
We have to have an amount, Nemo, for the per diem. What would the, I mean, we just, we have to have a figure, or else we have to go back to the 9650 and just accept that budget. And then you can decide if it will be full-time, part-time. Would you use some of that money from the 9650 as the per diem and not have her work eight hours? I mean, you would have to decide that, that way.
All right, then I'd like to amend it to, I make a motion that we would keep the county planning budget as proposed for 9650.
I support that motion.
Okay, we've kind of beat this one up, but there's a motion on the floor to go back to the requested budgeted amount of 9650. And it's been supported. Is there further discussion? Here ain't none. All in favor of what? Yes, roll call. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Carolyn?
Yes?
Commissioner Brown? Commissioner Gaines?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Kazma?
No.
Passes three to two.
Okay, now, Mr. Chairman, I need to have, if we're going to, if we're going to do this, now I need to know what we're going to cut $4,000 out of.
I think that's up to the Finance Committee. That's just my opinion. You can do, Mark, whatever, whatever everybody else says. But I think my opinion is that's up to the Finance Committee to go back, and we'll have to cut 4,000 from something else.
Okay, so if that's the case, and I want to make sure I understand this, all raises are the responsibility of the entire board. Cuts are the responsibility of the Finance Committee. Are there any other questions?
Well, if I may, I think before we decide who's going to, you know, figure out the pluses and minuses, we've got to go through this whole thing. We've only picked on one item. So if we may, I know I've got some questions wrote down. If we could, Bruce, could we start at, basically at the start? Or at least on the list that Derek sent us, he had to break down, you know, basically by budget or by department? Would it be possible to go through some of those?
Ask the questions you have, and I'll answer them.
Okay. On the Board of Commissioners budget, which is GL number 101, on that, on the on the sheet that Derek sent out, it's page four. I guess I had a question looking at, and this is just a question, on the 2020 projected activity. Wasn't Watkins Ross, when we did that contractual service, wasn't that in 2020, or was that in 2019?
Derek?
Just a second, I'm looking that up.
Yeah, what was that? I turned off the ones I need.
Okay, yeah, that was in 2019. It was actually posted on December 31st, 2019.
Okay, okay. Let's, see, I was thinking it was in 2020, and I see contractual services for 2020 only at $100. So that's what, you know, I was questioning. Legal fees, 2019, and I know earlier, Bruce, you you told us to look at 2019 numbers because they should be more accurate than 2020 numbers because of COVID. So legal fees, we had 12,580 in 2019, but yet for 2021, you're only proposing $5,000. Could you enlighten me on that?
Yes, we're not going to have any of the MERS mess to deal with. We're not going to have the ambulance contracts to deal with that we did before. So that was the reason for the cut.
Okay, okay, that's, that's. Now, Derek, maybe this is more of a question for you. Looking at the the wages and looking at the FICA and Medicare, I can't make the numbers work on that, so help me out, is the amount for Commissioners Committee work and per diem is, are both of those taxed?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Yeah, I still, I still don't make, so we may want to check those numbers as far as the FICA and Medicare. Those still don't come out unless those have been rounded upward or downward.
So one thing that, one thing that I do is I account for pre-tax deductions when I'm, when I'm building out the fringes. So I kind of look at the history and see who takes health insurance. And when you take health insurance, it lowers your taxable wages. So that's why it looks a little weird.
Right?
Does that make, does that make sense? So instead of being?
Well, the way I've calculated it, that makes. Say that again?
I was just saying, instead of being 6.27%, it's really more like, oh, it actually comes out pretty close, 6.27% for FICA. I don't see any issues with that.
Okay, well, I can get with you on that because I just want to understand how that, because I found a couple others that don't come out quite. And maybe I'm doing the calculation wrong, but I just want.
None of the FICA, none of the FICA, none of the retirement, none of the Medicare will come out even, Stephen, because as you remember, a couple of years ago, we started withholding a certain percentage of FICA, retirement and Medicare, and putting it into the back of the budget to account for open positions in the various departments. And if at the end of the year they needed that money because they didn't have any open positions, that money would get transferred back. So you're not going to have anything come out to the exact percentage that you're talking about.
So that is.
If you go to page four of the, of the proposed general fund budget document, and you look at department number 861 and 862, you can see that there's a retirement, FICA and Medicare line item set aside. So basically, it reduced most budget fringes by about 5% for turnover purposes. And it's set aside in this, in this budget, in those line items. And then if people are staffed from January 1st to December 31st, and they are required to pay all of their FICA and Medicare retirement to their employees, then they would require some of this money to be put back into their budget.
Okay, okay, I see it now. So that would account for some of the variations that I'm seeing in the individual budgets. The individual department budgets. Right. Okay, okay. I had forgotten about that. I appreciate that explanation.
Chairperson?
Mark, you got any other, you got any other questions?
Oh, yeah. I do, if you don't mind.
Well, keep firing away. You only got me for 45 more minutes, now I'm gone, so.
Mark?
Go ahead.
I mean, since we're going like kind of by section and we're on the Commissioners' budget, can we, can the other people ask questions that they have?
Please do.
I mean, one of the things that I noticed is on that budget, and I, hopefully I didn't miss what you said. I know you talked about legal fees already, that there's no office supplies. The contractual services says we only spent $100. I had asked David Hockum a while back if the Commissioners could have a computer in their office so that they can access the special system that we can't do remotely, that contains the archives and upcoming Board of Commissioners agendas. There's things we can't, because of security reasons, you know, look at remotely. We have to use a computer within the county. There's nothing, you know, there's nothing in there about that. It doesn't have to be a new computer, just one that we can access that information. Also, I noticed that the Finance Chairperson, so it separates out the Chair, the Vice Chair, and then it says the Finance Chairperson makes $500 or something, that I can't look at it while I'm trying to talk, so I'm having trouble with my computer. But shouldn't that also be separated out and have the Finance Chairperson's salary in that line, not just 500? and have the Finance Chairperson's salary in that line, not just $500? I just don't like that written.
Well, that's, yeah, it's an additional amount. That's then in the rules.
First of all, all of the IT stuff is in David's budget. David's presented with money to purchase whatever computers are needed and whatever's done, and it's all in his budget. It's not separated out in the individual budgets. And on the other item that you brought up, Commissioner, if you want to, if you want to change the word salary at the end, so Commissioners, Commissioners salary is the $19,500. If you want the Vice Chairperson, that would be, I don't know, use some word other than salary to indicate that it's in addition to. Is that what you're after?
Yes, I mean, because like the Chairperson, you have their specific salary, you know, separated. You have it for the Vice Chair, it's separated, but the Finance person, it just says their salary is $500 or whatever. That's not right. That's the additional amount they get. So either take their salary out and move it down and make that number 7,000, I believe, would be the correct number, or call that something else, but it's, it's just kind of semantics.
That's not a problem. We can do that. Mark, tie it down, Derek. All the IT stuff is in David's budget.
Okay.
What else you got?
Okay, jumping to District Court. I had some questions there in respect to the requested wages was 386, and we ended up at 356. Just an explanation, if you would, please.
Derek?
The judge requested an additional employee called the Trial Services Clerk that would handle looking for information on people at the time they're arrested, prior to the time that they appear in court, so that the judge is more well-versed on their situation. And that position was cut out of the proposed budget that you have in front of you. So that's the difference.
Okay. And there, there again, within the District Court budget, the same applies as far as the FICA and Medicare, some of that was tucked back in that other line?
All the way through. Every budget's like that.
Okay.
Matchup.
Very good. All right. Probate Court. Question was that I have, is Maury Spears the amount that we're paying to them? Is that within this budget, or is it somewhere else, Bruce?
What? No, I didn't hear you.
The money that we pay to Maury Spears down to Adrian, is that within...
That's in the childcare fund.
Okay, we'll get to that then. Okay.
Mark, I have a question.
Go ahead.
In probate, in the probate budget, there's $30,000 less in salaries, I believe. And I wanted to know why that was. And also, the family treatment part was cut by 15...
Yeah, I can speak to that one. The family treatment contribution is our local share that we have to put in every year in order to have them be able to keep their grant. And there's enough money in that pot, because we're putting in 20,000 this year, that next year, we only have to put in five, and there's enough money that's built up that we still meet our local share requirement. So that's why that got dropped. It'll be a one-year thing, and then it'll go back up. Derek?
Okay.
To the Commissioners' questions on salaries?
Yeah, so they have a position in the budget that they've gotten permission from the state to get funded through the childcare fund. So now half of that position is funded through the childcare fund, and that's why there's a reduction in the probate court budget. That, that, that pretty much explains it.
Okay, thank you. And then what about, are there no contractual services in this budget? I mean, there's, there's nothing that would be considered contractual services?
That was money that she requested this year to get a person, I forget exactly what it was for, but then that person was never hired. And so that's why we're not funding it for this next year. It was never hired, and until we get out of this whole COVID mess, probably won't be hired. But there's one other thing I want to state. Judge Bianchi, to her credit, took on and investigated this person that, not the one we're talking, that you just asked about, Commissioner, but this other person, the reason the salary's dropped. And we could have been, for a lot of years, this person could have been put into the childcare fund, and we could have had half their salary paid for. Judge Bianchi found that out and informed us of it, and so on and so forth. So to her credit, it's a pretty significant chunk of change, and I think she should be recognized for her job. Hey, go ahead.
Any other questions on that? Okay, on IT?
IT?
IT.
Yep.
Looking at permanent salaries, there was 88, and you may have told me this, Bruce, but if you would, please remind me what happened here. The request was 88, it was dropped to 48.
Okay, when David sat down and talked with us, he had a wish, and the wish he had was to hire a full-time employee to be in his office. His second wish was, if that wish didn't, if the first wish didn't come true, was to hire a person to come in one day a week, hired from a private contractor. This person would come in one day a week with a lot of skills, and one day every two weeks, excuse me, so it'd be 26 times a year, and pay that person to help out with more detailed IT stuff that he needed. Then we got into the conversation, if you remember, about the issue with bringing in a company to oversee everything that we're doing IT-wise, and to see what's good and what's bad. I called David and I said, "All right, give me your wishes. What's first, what's second, what's third?" The first, first wish was to hire this full-time person, which would have run time to get them with benefits and everything else and so on. And he looked into, we asked, Ruth and I asked, "What if we'd hire him halftime?" The person wasn't interested in halftime, and we couldn't afford, it was gonna end up being like $60,000 for a full-time person. Dave said that was his first wish. If he could have it, that's what he'd take. The second wish was to hire the person to come in one day every two weeks to deal with high-tech stuff and to help with, with things that are very complicated as far as the IT world goes. The third thing he said was bring in a company from the outside and do the whole overview of everything and so on and so forth. He said, "If I had $100,000," he said, "I'd do all three." Well, we didn't have it. And so we settled on the middle one. That was his second choice, and quite frankly, it was the, it was the most cost-effective for the, for the county. The first choice David won, as I said, was gonna run about 60, $60,000. The second choice, bringing in this person, runs about 23, I think it is, and Derek, you can correct me. And the third choice, bringing in this company to do the overview, was gonna be 35. So we gave Dave the second choice, what he wanted, and it was the most cost-effective for the, for the county.
Now, is that reflected, excuse me, is that reflected in contractual services then, seeing how that went higher?
Yes, that's where the person, the part-time person, the full-time person that he was asking for, it's permanent salaries, and that got eliminated.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on IT? Okay, Buildings and Grounds.
Yep.
My biggest question is, is the salary drop there?
Biggest question is what?
The salary drop requested was 191, and it was dropped to 171.
Yes, the halftime maintenance position is gone in this budget, and there was a salary increase for Earl Harris in this budget.
And that did or did not get approved?
In this, in this budget, there's funding of the halftime position, and there is additional funding for Earl Harris for a raise that, that you wanted for him.
So the 3,000 for Earl did get put in?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if it's 3,000, but it was, whatever was requested.
That, that is the amount that was requested. And I think it's important that we keep a very good, you know, HVAC employee, especially since we're, seems like we're always working on HVAC in one of these 13 buildings.
Mr. Chairman, if I could also make a comment? We need this $20,000 back in this budget for the part-time maintenance person. We're nowhere near in a position at this point, with all the work that still needs to be done at the courthouse, to be able to eliminate this person. They're vital to the maintenance department.
As indicated before, if you would like to make a motion to that effect, then we can keep moving.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to add the $20,000 back into the salaries that was cut in the budget today for the part-time maintenance person. And I guess Earl's raise is in there, but that also needs to be included.
I second that.
Further discussion, please. Hearing none, we'll vote on the motion to add the 20K back in for the part-time individual until the work at the courthouse is done.
Commissioner Brown?
No.
Commissioner Gaines?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Kazma?
No.
And Commissioner Carolyn?
Yes.
Passes three to two. Anything else on Buildings and Grounds?
I wanted to ask a question about the utilities. I noticed throughout the budget, not just in this area, but throughout the budget, requested amounts for utilities have been cut. And I want to point out that through much of the year, we had a lot of employees working from home and other things because of the exceptional year that would have caused... I'm just questioning on whether the utility budgets are realistic that are throughout this budget.
The utility items are always a guess, but yes, they're very realistic. If you look back, all of, any of them that have been reduced, if you look back to what they were in 19 and what they were in 20, they're still above that. There was extra dollars put in those utility budgets. And for instance, if you're looking at this particular budget, annex utilities, now, I've said this years, assuming that everybody will get moved over to the courthouse next year, so the 12,000 that's in there for the annex utilities may very well not be needed. Now, if we stretch out and we go another year without getting everybody moved over, then it won't be enough. But we're assuming that we'll be in over in the new building by the middle of the year, and the annex won't need any utilities. Other than, you know, heat.
Well, I might hear something, Bruce, on that. But hopefully it will happen. I just want to make another comment, and this is also not specifically to the Building and Grounds budget, but throughout the budget. I have seen throughout the budget where department heads and elected officials have asked for minimum for themselves running their departments, and they've been denied. And then other people who did not request raises were given raises, for some reason, even though they weren't requested. And then also, in several instances, where a small raise was requested by an elected official or a department head, they were denied their raise, but given a dollar raise, which is really, I don't understand that at all. So if you could address that, Commissioner, I'd appreciate it.
There was never a dollar raise given. I assume you're referring to the Register of Deeds budget?
The District Commissioner, there's several.
For budgets, I tried to round off so that there was no cent. So everything rounded to the nearest dollar. Now, maybe last year's budget, it rounded down, and this year's it rounded up. But all it is, is rounding so that when I do my audit prep work, there's, because the audit is all rounded, there's not a bunch of weird cents that I'm trying to tie out. Everything is off by a dollar, like a whole dollar.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. But I would like an explanation on why a lot of the budget raises were not given, and then there's several places where raises were not requested, but the people were given raises.
Were elected official, the elected officials were all told the same thing. There's not going to be any raises. Mark indicated that, to me, that he was gonna do a salary study next year, and that they would all be looked at at that point in time. So keep the elected officials completely out of it. On the department heads, there was a raise given to Dave Holcomb, and there was a raise given to Derek, and there was a raise given to Nick Wheeler. Derek is still, quite frankly, underfunded. He could make a lot more money anywhere else, and it's an ongoing effort to try to keep people like him around. Dave has absolutely busted his hind end the whole year, and all the work-at-home stuff and everything he's done in that regard, quite frankly, he's grossly underfunded. The amount of money he's making, even with the raise, doesn't even begin to compare to what you can get in other, what he could get in other places. Nick Wheeler, he got a small raise. He has done an absolutely fantastic job as equalization director and has really been a good source of information for all of us, and he has followed his job description to the T. So that's what I can tell you.
Can I, can I make a comment?
Go ahead.
I was in on this too with Bruce, and I'd just like to say that, having been Vice Chair of Finance for the last seven years, we went through some lean years there, where some of these people should have had a raise and didn't get one, because we didn't have the money. We were in some very lean times. And now that we're doing a little bit better, we're looking at each one of these individuals, and we're trying to, we're trying to bring them up to what their counterparts make in their same population area in another county. And we're not even, we're not even close to that. Bruce is correct in what he's saying. If you went out and you tried to hire a brand-new tech person, even with giving Dave a raise, he should have gotten a raise a while ago, and we didn't have the money. We bought computers instead and did other things that the tech department needed. So we're trying to get caught up with everything that's needed, and we can't do it all in one. And, but even with giving him that raise, he still is way under what he, what he should be. We've got fantastic employees in Hillsdale County who are working really, really hard for us, and we need to, we need to give them raises. Derek, we're trying to retain. Derek is a retention. I was in on the interview for Derek when he was very first hired, and the reasons why he was hired and he was brought in very low, and he's exceeded all expectations in his job. A new, a new position. He's far exceeded, and we're trying to retain him. So that's where, that's where we're coming from. But we looked at each individual person, and when the last time they had a raise, and how much it was, and all of that, when we, when we did this. It's a good, good question.
Well, I just, I just want to clarify that I don't have an objection to the raises that were given, but they weren't requested, most of them. And then when small raises were requested by other people, those were denied. And so that's, that's a part I have a problem with.
But like Dave Holcomb had requested a raise in a previous year, not this year, but he did in a previous year, and he got denied. I know that for a fact. And Nick has also, there were years when a raise for him was discussed, and then we denied it. So it wasn't, everything wasn't just all in this year, Julie. It, it, it's just a lot of things that we needed to get caught up, and we're low on in different areas, and we, we, we didn't have the money to do it all in one year. So we're continually trying to get caught up this year. That's how it's reflected. That's how it's reflected.
All right, thank you for the explanation.
Thank you, good questions.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I'd like to say something, please.
Go ahead.
Thank you so much.
Mark, before she gets started, you've got me for about another 20 minutes, so.
Okay, I'm watching the clock.
Okay. All right, I put the clock right in front of me, too. So Bruce, I'm going to make it really quickly. I appreciate all the budget presentation. I know it's been tough, but, you know, I, I look at it a slightly different way, and I hate to burst the bubble. But we are in a very difficult timeframe in these unprecedented times. I always like to remind ourselves that we're trying to amend our budget. I, I see that, we've seen it with what you've done and Ruth. And, but with all said and done, when we talk about raises, I mean, here we're, I know there were a little bit of framework where I decided to ask for a little bit of monies within the Planning Commission. But when we're asking for raises as local officials, I personally believe under state law, we don't have a job description that would put us to a place where we'd say anything extra we do that we need to get paid for this or need to get paid for that. And it's rightly that she said that local officials should be put aside and not be brought into this. But I still feel that here we're asking for a lot of raises. I know it was, it was put in place and a lot of questions on that. But out there, we're looking at a county that is totally or partially shut down because of all the mandates and all the, and I, I'd like to look at that, that the food industry we see has been hit really hard. Or any local official can say today that all our businesses are suffering. So here, when we ask for raises, let's look around and look at what we're going through. Because I don't see any clarity if there are any more federal stimulus money that's going to be made available. So I, I think if these budget cuts in all of these places are made, I personally feel that we're going through a very difficult time. And I don't feel that as local officials, our demands should be kept on increasing because we have a county who is suffering on a major loss. But everything's shut down, our businesses are not operating on the level they are supposed to. So that's just, that's just all I want to say today, that.
All right, thank you.
I, I'm not going to talk right now. I realize that Bruce has to leave in 20 minutes, so I'm going to let you guys go on. But I could make a comment about what Namu said, I'll hold it till later.
Thank you. I'm going to jump over to Drain Commission budget. Chief Deputy Salary requested was 45. The proposed budget has nothing. Please explain.
The Drain Commissioners, the Deputy Drain Commissioners' salary is back in...
Is that in Special Services, Bruce?
It's in 101.00868. Services in the amount of $43,848. It's not in his budget. If he gets a Deputy Drain Commissioner, hires him, it'll be transferred over. But it's 43,848.
Okay.
48, so it's in there. It's the same thing we've done the last three years.
So I, I guess my question would be, and I talked to Matt this morning, he is planning on having his deputy onboard effective one January.
So that means, so that means in one January with the new board, you'll transfer the money over and it'll be there.
Okay, so you want it to sit in that special...
Yep.
Special Services account until such time it's needed.
Until such time as he gets somebody hired. Something could happen, and it could fall apart, and they might not hire until the first of February, the first of March, whatever. And when it gets hired, then it gets transferred over.
Okay, and, and I do agree, that's the way we've done it the last couple of years, or at least last year for sure. But, okay. Is there any questions on Drain Commission? Okay, I'd like to jump to 865, General Insurance.
Go ahead.
Malpractice Insurance. We showed 4666, yeah, excuse me. 4,676 in 2019. We're showing nothing for 2021. I know for a fact, because I looked back at emails with Stephanie and I, we paid for Dr. Kimball's malpractice insurance here within the last month or so, and it was 6,111.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. That was something that was new. Was it 2019 it was new, so it was never budgeted before then?
That is correct.
And it hasn't made its way into our budget yet, and it probably should if it's going to be an expense that we continue.
Well, it will be as long as we've got the nurse and the doctor, you know, at the jail.
Derek, how much do we need?
I think this last year it was about six grand.
Yeah, this year, we wrote the check for 6,111.
Then I'll move, I'll move to put 6,500 into this line item.
Okay, that would be acceptable considering we saw an increase. Now, there's a chance we might see a decrease, but that would be good. But...
I would recommend an item for that.
There is a...
There is a separate line item for it.
Yes, there is. It's 865 for 101.00865939. So did anyone support Bruce's motion to put 6,500 in the 21 proposed budget?
Julie Gaines.
Thank you, Julie. Any discussion? Hearing none, go ahead, Jody.
Commissioner Gaines? Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Caswell?
Yes.
Commissioner Carolyn?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Very good, motion passes, thank you. Any other questions on the General Insurance item? Okay. Probate Care. I guess I'm back, Bruce, and I don't know where it's at, the Maury Spears question. You said it was in the Child Care?
Child Care Fund. Derek, what number is that?
It's a Special Revenue Fund, 292.22.
292. Okay, hold on a minute. Jody's looking it up for me.
So you're going to have a hard time picking it out of this. This fund historically has ran everything through one account.
Okay.
Over the last two years, Jessica Nelson and I have been working to split out their expenses. And you can see now we have a lot of the wages split out and things like that. But you still see the large chunk of their expenditures are run through the 700 account. So the Maury Spears expense would be located in that number.
Oh, within the 700 account?
Yeah.
Okay, and currently, what is that amount, Derek?
Oh, just a second.
We have, we have a deal cut with them over there. I think it's 16,750 bucks a month. Judge Bianchi cut that deal with them, and the amount of kids we put over there pays for them. And I, every now and then, I figure out how much it is per day, per diem, and it comes out to be, generally, it's in the neighborhood of 70, 80 bucks a day, which is dirt cheap. Judge Bianchi, again, has done a great job for the county in getting this deal with them over there.
Okay.
I think it actually recently increased to about 21,700 bucks. And I, I think that's locked in for a year.
Now that's, Derek, you think that amount is per month?
Per month.
Yeah, yep.
Okay, okay. Just to give you, the chargebacks under Title 4E on some of the state facilities that we sent to, just to give you a reference point as far as how good that Maury Spears deal is, is like Bay Pines is 154 a day, and Chihuahua is 155 a day, so.
Mr. Chairman, I've corrected, they're both about 310 a day. Half of that is our cost.
Right, that's what I said, is the chargeback to us.
But the 80 hours that we're... Half of that is our cost, and it's really 40 bucks. The other 40 gets paid by the state.
Okay, okay, I got you. Yep. So, and there is a difference for anybody that isn't familiar with that, that we used to pay the whole thing, and then the state would reimburse us. Now we only get billed for our half of it. Which I think that, Derek, I think that change was about, what, a year or two ago?
Yeah, I think December, October of 2019 was when the state pays first change was made.
Yep, I believe that's correct.
That only applies to the DHS side.
Correct, correct.
Questions, Mr. Chairman?
That's the questions I had wrote down. So has anyone else got a specific question?
I do have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
On page, I think it's 39, it's the Veterans Affairs Budget. The Assistant Director has a raise of $10,000. Is that a grant? Or where is that money coming from?
That's not a grant. What happened, she's paid for by a, she's paid for by a grant. And what happened was that the state or the Veterans Affairs Office was going to lose that grant because back when Renee took over the head job, she said, "Just pay me a little bit more and get rid of the assistant." So we cut the budget. Well, the state won't give you a grant, the VA office won't give you a grant if you've cut your budget because they don't want you supplementing your budget with state money. So we had to, if you're asked to add money back into that budget so that that budget was whole. That's what this is right here. It's money that we have in there. It will be money, I trust Renee implicitly, and it will be money that more than likely, I can't promise you, will be returned to the general fund at the end of the year as being unspent. But we have to put it in there, otherwise we lose, she loses the grant.
Okay, all right, I remember that, thank you.
And also, if you remember, earlier in the year, we did get the $50,000 grant money for this year. And so that is, you know, it's in play. So, okay. Any other questions on the budget for Bruce?
I, I have a question.
Go ahead.
I just want to make sure now with these changes that we've made, if I'm, if I am correct or not, I wrote down 6,500 for the insurance, 20, 20K for the maintenance person, and then 5,200, which was the Planning Commission, the difference of the 96.50 and the 44.50 was 5,200. So when I added 5,200, 20K, and 6,500, I got 31.7. Is that correct? Is that, that's what the, Bruce?
And your, and your job and my job next week will be to cut whatever needs to be cut in order to find the 31,000.
Okay, all right, just wanted to make sure I was on the right, same page. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions on... We still have the motion on the floor of 2105 for the tentative general fund budget, and we're dealing with questions and/or motions on that topic, so.
Now, I want to say one more thing before we vote. And this is not for the commissioners who are sitting here, because we're all going to be gone. This is for the commissioners who are listening in. This budget is predicated on accepting the inflationary increase in taxable values, which we'll be voting on next June, May or June. This budget is predicated on that acceptance. Okay, so I just want you to be aware of that, okay? Had the amendment kicks in and it gets rolled, the budget gets rolled back if that's appropriate. But there's an inflationary increase that is allowed, which we have a public hearing. Then, get it on the fact that that will take place, and that the answer to that will be yes, will be accepted. So I just want to make that clear. All right, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay. Any more questions on the tentative budget? If not, we'll take a vote.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Caswell?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, he said yes. Commissioner Carolyn?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
And Commissioner Gaines?
Yes.
Okay, it passes, please continue, Bruce, you got about six minutes.
Resolution, Resolution 2106. The Honorable Board of Commissioners, we recommend tentative approval of the 2021 budgets for the Special Revenue Fund, Debt Retirement Funds, Construction Funds, and Enterprise Funds for the County of Hillsdale. Respectfully submitted, Bruce Caswell, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
For Mrs. Ruth?
Moved and supported, questions?
You want me to go over, we closed a bunch of these, a bunch, four or five of these funds that were no longer needed, transferred the money and so on and so forth. It's, it's a yearly thing you got to do to clean these accounts up, so you get rid of them, so you don't have 50 million of these things floating around. But there wasn't anything dramatic that was, was done with any of them. It was just a matter of cleanup and so on. You want me to go through them, or you want me to be quiet and vote?
Does anyone have questions on a specific one? Does anyone want Bruce to go through them one by one? And I, I guess that one of the comments I would make, if you remember back to the audit presentation, in the notes on that, there were some comments about the Special Revenue Funds and how different funds could be cleaned up or closed out, as Bruce has indicated. And so basically, just to comment on Bruce's comment, this is the time that that type of cleanup is done. And so I applaud the Finance Committee for that. Thank you. So, any other comments?
And I just want to point out, there's one fund that's got 109,000 in it, okay? This was a grant that Judge Lisney got from the Weatherwax Foundation up to Jackson, and it was for the drug court, okay? It's just, Weatherwax Foundation apparently is just abandoned. There doesn't have to be any reporting with it, but the judge is keeping that money aside so that if some of the other grants that she tries to get end up coming up short or whatever, she's got a pot of money that she can tie into. So that's more or less for you new commissioners that are coming onboard to know that that's setting out there to help with the drug court in case any issues come up down the line. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? We'll, we'll take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Caswell?
Yes.
Commissioner Carolyn?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaines?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes. Resolution passes. Bruce, you got anything else real quick before you must depart?
No.
Hey, I, I have something real quick.
Go ahead, Derek.
We, I think you guys need to do a motion to have a public hearing at your next meeting.
That is correct.
So I don't know what time you want to set that at, but if you just have a motion to have one, and Steffi and I can work together, hopefully she'll work with me to get it published.
Would do that right now?
You're supposed to laugh, Stephanie.
I don't know anything about it.
Um, we can do that right now, if someone would make, like to make a motion, we had tentatively talked, um, of doing it the same that we've done in the past, we would do it at 10:00 AM on, on the next meeting, which is December 8th. So we would need a motion in that order, if you would, please.
So moved, this is Ruth.
Aye, second thought.
Moved and supported, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. She's trying to write it all down, so we're hurrying.
Okay, Commissioner Carolyn?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaines?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Caswell?
Okay, so the public hearing is set for the 21 budget hearing for December 8th at 10:00 AM. Anything else, Bruce, or Derek?
I'm done. I'll stick around for your 107 resolution if you're about it.
I'll jump right to it, sir. Um, do you have that handy? Um, 107 is authorized chair to sign structural analysis agreement with MT Engineering LLC. Um, I'll read the resolution itself, "We, the Board of Commissioners, authorize Marky Wiley to sign the agreement between MT Engineering, LLC and Hillsdale County, uh, Michigan regarding the structural analysis of the Hillsdale County Jail performed by Falk Construction," and I think that's Neil Civic, I think, uh, a move, move for adoption.
Aye, second thought.
Whoa, okay, who's supported?
Nemo.
Thank you, we'll take that one. All right, it was in your packet, you've had a chance to read it over, um, talking with Matt, who, Matt Taylor runs MT Engineering with Ian Falk Construction, and the sheriff and I and, uh, Jason met with Matt and Chris out to the jail last, I believe it was last Wednesday. Um, if you recall, we had done a resolution for up to $7,000 for the structural analysis, that cost us about 4,400, so they came in under budget on that. This agreement would be for them to take care of putting the project out for bids, um, basically, it's inclusive, they would provide the drawings, the bid process, um, and do all the legwork for us for a, a fee. Um, and so they would also bid on the project, but they would also put it out for bids as well. Now, in talking to Matt and Chris, uh, last Wednesday, we will see some further information on this, uh, hopefully on the 8th, because I told him we're on a time crunch here. Um, it would be a spring project, but we're looking at three different things, just fixing what they found that's structurally wrong with the brick and the, uh, um, the other structural aspects, I mean, there were some metal issues and, and some tie-ins. The other thing would be is, um, a estimate on going a little further and fixing a couple of windows, replacing them. And then the third option would be to not only repair those items, but create a new, a totally new look on that building by going around and replacing some windows that need replacing, since they're still 1970 windows, and putting steel about halfway up, uh, on the building, would help as far as heat and would help as far as the aesthetics. The sheriff informed us at that time as well that he could, on some of this, through a USDA rural, uh, development grant, get about 55% of the money, so there's a lot of pieces in play here, but, um, the main thing is, is this, this agreement would authorize them to put this all together for us for a fee, so is there any questions, I've explained as much as I know?
I just have a comment, uh, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Go ahead.
You know, I, and like I said, the amount of, you know, framework of time and years that have gone by, you know, things do change, and, um, I would like to concur with the work that is supposedly going to be done. Um, as I recall, the findings, you know, from last one year as a board liaison to, uh, the sheriff's office, all of that brick facade, um, and a lot of other things that were being deteriorated due to weather conditions, you know, from years and years, the entire displacement and the cracking, uh, which included the ledger anchor failure, all due to corrosion and, which involved a lot of further cracking in concrete, and we saw that. Um, a lot of that adversely affected the surrounding masonry elements as well, so my view, um, on that, I thought I'll just share that with you guys, that the foundation and the very structure which caused a lot of, um, stabilization, you know, although with all the repairs would be really expected as a final goal, um, but to suggest to develop and implement these measures to stabilize the wall, and that is what I concur, so I, I, I know uh, all the structure analysis proposal that was, uh, done with the fee mentioned, um, that was brought to you earlier, and I had written a note to you as well, uh, was, I, in my opinion, was cost effective, so, so with all of that, I'm, I'm hoping that there would be a, a good framework to fix those particular things that were falling apart, uh, otherwise further neglect, like I said, will, will fall heavy on, on us, so I, I think, uh, this is good, I think the entire meeting that I was advised later by Mr. Mark Wiley and Jason and the team there, I think went pretty fruitful, so. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for those comments. Any other comments or questions?
Put up with the money for our share if we get that grant.
Good question. Um, I don't have a good answer for you, quite frankly, my approach on this right now, personally, was to see what the proposals look at, like, and then for the board to make a decision on whether we want to even go down that road. Um, so that's kind of, I, I hadn't progressed that far, Bruce.
All right, so all this is doing is just, 7,800 bucks to, to do a complete study and to prepare RFPs, but it's not putting RFPs out?
Oh yeah, it would, well, once we decide on which, so as I indicated, there's going to be three scenarios. And so, once we decide which direction we want to go, they would put out, as part of that package, they would put out the RFPs, so. Yep, they'd handle the whole process for us, but it'd only be after we decide which option we want to pursue, so. So that's forthcoming.
Okay.
Any further questions or comments? Roll call?
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaines?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner Caswell?
No.
Commissioner Carolyn?
Yes.
Passes four to one.
All of you, thank you for your questions today, they were very good, take care of yourselves, happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, Bruce.
Thanks, Bruce, happy Thanksgiving next week.
Okay, let's see, uh, under my, so I need to have a few, uh, comments under my report here, uh, just as a point of information, jury trials have been canceled through to the first of the year. Um, uh, let's see, last week on our, um, on our, uh, call that Julie and I have been doing with all elected and department heads, um, MSUE, much like the county buildings, is close to the public, Kim is there Monday through Thursday. Uh, Marty Taylor reported that the wind towers will be fully operational sometime in December. Um, and there's 60 towers plus two more to be added, plus there's a, uh, I believe he said like a transfer or a, um, not sure if I'm using the right word, but there'd be a central station for the, you know, for the power grid. Um, Consumers, of course, is working with them on all that, uh, with the wind power company. Um, let's see. Insurance open enrollment, uh, started and will run through, Derek, I believe you said December 4th, is that correct?
Uh, yes, I believe so, yes, through December 4th, um, and there's meetings available tomorrow. Uh, open enrollment is currently open right now, if you already know what you would like to elect, you can log in, um, and make your elections, and if you have any questions on how to get logged in, or you forgot how, um, I can help with that. Um, yeah, so I, I think that's pretty straightforward.
Derek, I was asked a question by one of the commissioners elect, the new commissioners, um, can they, uh, get signed up for insurance here during open enrollment?
It's a good question, I'm not positive, I'll look in to see when the soonest we can get them signed up is.
Okay, if you would check that, please, and I know they've all got county emails at this time, so if you could shoot something out to them on that, I would appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Um, let's see, we're still, still, Julie and I are still working with the sheriff's department on contractual issues. Um, tentatively, we've got a Zoom meeting set up with, uh, with them and with MERS, and Julie, I don't have a date on that yet, because, um, Marnie Daggett sent about three different dates and everybody was replying, um. I think the 7th is off the table, I think the 3rd and 4th of December, so you can tentatively, uh, as soon as I hear back from Marnie Daggett, I'll send that to you as well. And, uh, I guess that's all I've got at this time, unless there's a question.
I have a question, Mark.
Go ahead.
You said jury trials, you mean all, you mean district and circuit, all of them?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, so unfortunately, Judge Smith's last few days are going to be without jury trials, so. Um, not the way he's wanted to end his year, I'm sure, so. Okay, any, uh, let's see, public comment, anyone wish to comment from the public?
Mark?
Go ahead.
This is Jason.
Jason, go ahead.
Were we going to talk about the addendum today?
Well, um, it, it was under the, uh, consent agenda, and it passed.
Oh, okay, very good.
So you, you didn't have to speak today, Jason, but I think you're in on.
I appreciate that.
All right, sir.
Bye.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, we'll do additional business and we'll call it a day, uh, Ruth?
Um, I just want to, I'm going to turn my other computer thing down here, um, I just want to say something about the budget, um, at, at some point, we, not right now, but I'd like to discuss the whole budget process and how we do the budget process, and I really want Derek's input on it, and what he thinks about it. Um, in the past, we've always walked around and gone and talked to all the department heads and elected officials one-on-one at the beginning of the process, and then we did the budget, and then we walked around again and talked to them again about where we were at, and the last two years, we have not walked around the second time. Now, this year, I, I think it's because of COVID, obviously, we're not, you know, doing a lot of walking around and going to different offices, so I understand that's an exception. But last year, there were reasons why we didn't walk around the second time, and I just hope that going forward with the new board, that maybe they talk to the alert and get input, um, from him on what he thinks, and maybe just look at the budget process and how it's done going forward, and maybe they might want to make some changes and improve it so that it's even better. But I like going around and talking, I like communication, and I like direct face-to-face personal contact, and talking to them about what they want and their requests, and what, what they, why they want their requests, I, I, I like to know from them how their departments are operating and how we can help them and empower them to make their departments work the best that they can work at and be the most productive, and so I'd like to see a, well, I won't be on the board next year, but the new board, just to work with Derek, because he knows what's going on, and Derek is invaluable, in my opinion, he's very smart, very good at what he does, so, anyway, just, uh, wanted to thank Bruce and everybody for working on it, and, uh, thank everybody for that, thank you.
Thank you, Ruth, and I would concur with you, because I had at least, at least a couple reach out to me about that second go-around, and, um, you know, they felt that it was needed and, and they kind of missed that second walk-around, so.
Yeah, I, I think it's needed too.
So, your comments well taken.
Thank you.
Julie, additional business?
I, I would like to thank, um, Bruce and Ruth, um, and Derek, and then, of course, all our department heads and elected officials for working so hard on the 2021 budget, we appreciate all your efforts and the hard work that you put in, thank you.
Thank you. Nemo, closing comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, um, you know, I, this is a great time of the season, you know, Thanksgiving, so, yeah, I'd like to start by giving thanks uh, to all our, um, head departments, um, to you, Mr. Wiley, I'd like to give thanks to, um, our finance, uh, committee, uh, which includes Derek, a key player in all of the work that's been done. Um, Julie Gaines, Ruth Brown, Bru- and Bruce, um, I think, um, we've achieved a, a great, um, great realm of spirit, I think the new board, when they take over, they will have that platform. Uh, I'm, I'm, I've always believed in the capital improvement plan, and that was always been my plan, so it's really nice to be visionary, and one thing that I have got to learn, um, or if I may, District 5 has got to learn from Bruce Caswell, is, um, you know, um, the budgets, and so, uh, and the visionary plan that so that's been great, um, I believe that reflecting on our county's issues, needs, and priorities, I think all the budgets, revenue expenditures, uh, there's a great familiarity, then, and the platform that we're going to be placing in front of the new board, I think it's going to be solid. I believe in the new board, I, I, I believe in the new leadership, uh, I, I think, uh, it's going to be good, I, I'd like to leave that on a positive. Um, I believe all the county departments, administrator, the county clerks, all these department and stuff, I think the work that's been done, I want to personally uh, give God Almighty the glory for, for this period of time that I could give thanks, and, um, and especially during this pandemic, it's been hard, and our law enforcement, which include the sheriff's department, Jay- Jason Stiverston, including the entire, uh, deputy, the union, um, um, run by, uh, Deputy Leva, our, uh, current sheriff, Scott Hutchery, or under sheriff Nate Lemright, all these people during this very stressful time have, um, have come out there and, you know, worked very carefully, swiftly to develop extremely promising, um, you know, new platforms, so for that, I want to say thanks.
Thank you. I, I as well would like to thank the, the, uh, Finance Committee for all their work, um, as well as Derek. um, as well as Derek and, uh, and wish you all a very happy Thanksgiving. And with that, we stand adjourned. Stay safe.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving.